On February 5th, 5:30 PM. And we're gonna begin tonight. I want to just, I just want to say a word of heartfelt sympathy to the Kyle and Littlefield family. Tragic incidents this week that I know everyone is aware of, but it's, I think, important at times like this to, one, reflect on the true heroes of this nation and then the tragedies that can befall them. And our thoughts and prayers go out to the families of those. And also want to say a word of gratitude and thanks to the Sheriff's Department and our former council member, Alan Nash, who's working that from a district attorney's office perspective and their professionalism, and just wish you all the best in your continued endeavors in that area. The first item that we have on the agenda tonight is citizens' general discussion, and I've got, I've got two that have been presented to me to start the meeting, and I'll call on those, and then if there are others, you'll be more than welcome to come forward. So if you are, if you were here and would like to make a statement before the council, I'd ask you to come forward and state your name and address for the council, please. Who wants to go first?
I'm James Smola.
Okay, just come over to the podium, please.
I don't like to speak in public.
Yeah, that's okay.
My name is James Smola.
We don't either, so.
I run the South Luke Pawn Shop and have for a long time. I'm here to talk about the pawn shop ordinance that was recently passed. This ordinance had originally came up about a year ago, and we discussed it, and the chief said he was going to discuss it some more and make some changes, and he assured us that we would know about it before any meetings took place. And that didn't happen. We were notified about it about three weeks after the fact. The pawn shops are regulated by the legislature, actually, the Pawn Shop Act. And when I talked to the OCC, they said to say this one thing. "The legislature has exclusive authority regarding the operation of pawn shops." The ordinance that the city has done has added to the Pawn Shop Act and made it more burdensome for us to run our businesses. The pawn shops already are required by law to furnish a copy of anything that we buy or make a loan on, and in the past 28 years or more. The police department has sent somebody down to pick up pawn tickets on a weekly basis, and they go through the pawn tickets and match them up against reported stolen items in town, and that's gone on up till about a year or two ago. And under Chief Briggs, he's not sent anybody down to pick up the tickets on a regular basis. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Okay. None? Okay, thank you.
How are y'all? Pinky Swindles Jewelry? I'm down here about the same thing. Chief Bridges came by when we happened to be out of town, left a copy of his proposed ordinance about a year ago, and I called and visited with him on it, and I told him I would try to get with him and come down and talk to him, and I pointed out the fact that Precious Metals Act that was passed in the eighties, that we'd been complying with it all this time, and collecting a form similar to this one, that's the new one that the state of Texas has out. And I didn't ever get back down to talk to him, but he assured me, just like he did now, that before this ordinance was enacted, that we'd be notified and could meet with the committee or meet with the city council and discuss it with you, and that didn't happen. I don't know, maybe you did call, we wasn't there or something. We've been in and out a lot, but we're regulated by the Department of Public Safety, Office of Consumer Credit, and we're signed up for that along with three other businesses in town. And this form is what has to go to them, which I don't have any problem with that. I don't mind even transmitting that to the city if that's what they want, but this, the deal that your ordinance calls for is this leads online, this is not a government agency. This is just a computer company. Is that right, Chief? This is not a government.
No, they are. No, it's not a government.
It's not a government agency. And the, I'll say the majority of the people that I buy gold and stuff from are people that I know or have known most of my life, and some of them are little old ladies that have decided to clean out their jewelry box, or some girl that I've known, they've decided to clean out their jewelry box and get rid of a lot of unwanted stuff. I mean, it's not, I won't say savory characters coming by, I mean, I might say we might not have one, but we're real reluctant to buy from them. If we do get somebody like that, and we've done it in the last month or two, called the city and turned it over to investigators, and they came out, and sure enough, it was some item that was stolen from their next door neighbor, and they got it back. But that's, we did it on our part, not because we were required to, but I just think that this transmitted to the city along with the description, or picture, if they want a picture, would be sufficient. I don't think that we should have to do this leads online, because we don't have any control over where that information goes, or what they do with it, or if at some point in time they decide to sell those names. And, you know, if I've got some little old lady up here, and they take her information, or they start selling that to somebody, and they start trying to contact her, I just don't think that's right. And I would like, if the Health and Safety decides to revisit this ordinance, would really like to visit with them about it a little bit, and the city attorney. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Swindle? Okay, thank you. Any general comments or questions? Okay. Did you have something?
I just, I might add that I have been contacted by someone with the Association, Pawn Brokers Association.
Officer from Democratic.
Okay, he told me who he was, but I've forgotten. And he brought up some concerns to me, and I am checking those concerns, and we'll get back to the council.
Okay. All right, so.
And, excuse me, Mayor, but Mr. Swindle also caught me one day and told me about a concern or two his, and I also told him I'd check on it. I just, I haven't done it yet, but I will.
Okay. So let's just make note that we're gonna take your input, and we'll take a staff action on that, and then come back to the council with a recommendation of the findings.
About this ordinance, we're supposed to be signed up, I think, today.
Okay.
I know y'all can't take action on it tonight, but I'd like for this to be put off for a little while, so we can all sit down and discuss it a little more. I just want.
So is that right? Is tomorrow the effective date of the ordinance?
I haven't, I don't know. The chief probably does.
Actually, I believe this date was effective, was six days.
When I was contacted by the association I talked to, I called some of the police officers, Sergeant King, and visited with him, and he assured me that there weren't any complaints that they were working on at that time, and that they had none planned. So I relayed that on to the association man. And so they're not out there trying to prosecute, investigate, prosecute right now, and I told that man that I didn't think they would until we got back with them. And so we, I will put it on my fast track, and then we'll let the council have it and put it on their, whatever track they want to put it on.
Okay.
What I'm saying is, I don't think anybody's fixing to get arrested for not filling out that form. I'm not speaking for the chief, but that would be my understanding.
So Chief, you want to say anything?
I would just add that we've had a number of businesses who are affected by the ordinance that have come into compliance, and that would include the other pawn shop in town, and that would include the other jewelry store in town as well. They've not made aware of it, complying with the ordinance.
Okay.
And signed up to continue to enter their items as required by the ordinance.
Okay.
And I do know that there's a number of other cities that have this ordinance, and that ordinance was out of the state, I believe, city level.
Okay. Do you, the council have any questions?
Pinky mentioned the potential of selling names or contact information from the service that we use, that we are requiring them to use. Is that in our agreement with them that they would not sell that name, or is?
I believe, I believe all that confidentiality is in the agreements, and I don't have the agreement in front of us, but this is one of the things that they're big about.
Pinky, was your question then related to, like, selling names and phone numbers, and like getting on a mailing list, or whatever?
There you go. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. All right, thank you. All right, any other citizen discussion, general items for the council? If not, we'll move on to item three on the agenda, and that is the presentation and consideration of the Chamber of Commerce Tourism Budget and Annual Report. I'll call July Danley.
Thank y'all for allowing me to come tell you a little bit about what's going on in Stephenville, though most of you know a lot about it. On behalf of the Board of Directors of our Chamber of Commerce and our staff, we just want to express our appreciation for the positive relationship that we have with the city council, and how we're able to partner together to promote this community that we all love. Our chamber is governed by a Board of Directors, and I'm excited that so many of them have shown up tonight to support us, and just want to introduce them. We have Kim Pac Wilson, and Dr. Greg Hubbard, Steve Patterson, Wendell Hollingsworth, Glenn Newberry, Daryl Brown, and Darla Doty. Am I missing anybody? They all sat together back there. And then also have some, Marilyn Pipes, who is our Ambassador President, and then our Membership Director, Teresa Burdick, and our Director of Operations, Jennifer Grand Prey, and a couple other chamber representatives. Our leadership Stephenville class, as you know, that has already had City Day, is required to attend the city council meeting so that they're more aware of what's going on in the community. And we have Ms. Valerie Cernasek with Houston Academy, and Molly Williams with Nearing Technology that are in the class, so they're here to learn and see how business is conducted. So I want to thank them for coming. I believe it's an exciting time for tourism in Stephenville. As we all know, occupancy tax revenues grew steadily from 2003 to 2008, and then, as with the rest of the economy, in 2009 and 10, we took a hit and decreased and had to adjust our spending. But from 2010 to 2011, the occupancy tax increased 5 percent, and last year, from 2011 to 12, we increased another 13 percent. And so that means that people are continuing to come to visit Stephenville for everything from events to business, and staying in hotels, and hopefully then spending their money while they're here. So that's exciting. Our community continues to benefit from these visitors who come for the rodeos, the ropings, the expos, the tournaments, the festivals, and just to enjoy the quality of life that we have here. When it comes to tourism, the Chamber of Commerce serves as your convention and visitor bureau, and we're the first place that people think about to call or to stop by when they want to know about what there is to do when they visit Stephenville. We receive calls every day from people looking to visit or to relocate. Last year, we actually had 1,400 visitors walk through the lobby doors, and while some of those are local chamber members or people wanting local information, the majority of our walk-in traffic, probably 70 to 80 percent, are people wanting visitor information or looking to relocate. They're out-of-towners, and so we provide them with lots of maps and visitor information and greet them as welcoming as we can so that they enjoy their time here. With respect for your time, I won't go over everything that we do or all the specific events, but do want to just highlight a couple of our goals and accomplishments. One of the large chunks of budget that we spend tourism dollars on is advertising and promotion. And of course, the state of Texas has seven things, seven items or categories that hotel occupancy tax revenues can be spent on, and advertising and promotion is one of them, in order to invite out-of-towners to come spend time and spend the night and spend their money in our town. The Office of the Governor says that over 50 percent of tourism in Texas is actually from Texas residents, people from other parts of the state traveling. And so one of our goals has been and continues to be having a bigger presence both regionally and throughout the state, to encourage some of those people who may not be traveling to California, but who want to travel and get out of their community to come spend some time in Stephenville. Using website technology is something that we've invested more and more in and are continuing to do because it's very economical. Having ads in big magazines is, costs thousands of dollars, but for a smaller fee to be listed online at All Around Texas, or Tour Texas, or Gone to Texas, a lot of those sites, we get a lot more feedback, and it's more, a better value for our advertising dollar with the budget that we have. We are also looking to build a whole new chamber website, and it's in the design stage, and we hopefully by summer will be able to roll that out, and it will allow us to track statistics better and see where people are searching our site from, and be able to have a little bit more ability to promote through some new technologies there. Along with advertising, event support is one of the big ways that we increase visitors, and we've supported over 15 major events and numerous smaller events. And when the board makes a decision on the amount, we take into consideration the total number of hotel nights expected, the total attendance, and the overall impact, as well as the amount that's requested from the producer of the event. And we estimate conservatively that the event support that's been given through our avenues is responsible for about 6,000 hotel night stays and about 70,000 visitors, and of those visitors, some of them stayed one day, some of them stayed up to five days. And if you average about two and a half days, and a visitor spending about $100 a day, which is very conservative, that's about a 17 and a half million direct impact. Some people say a dollar turns over at least once. Some people say it turns over almost seven times in a community. So that could be an impact of anywhere from 35 million to 120 million, depending on which formula you use for how many times that dollar turns over. So we feel like that it's a very good return on investments for supporting a lot of those events. On the event list, I won't go over every single one, but I do want to highlight just a couple of the large ones and the national recognition that we get for those. The Cowboy Capital Barrel Series is, there are six season races and then a finals, and in each of those races, they have around 800 competitors, and at the finals, there's about 1,500. And they do a live webcast on the Lone Star Arena website and also on barrelhorseworld.com. And so there are literally people from Canada and all over the nation that are watching the barrel race that's going on here in Stephenville. And some of our local businesses have ads that are going on in between that. So a lot of people that are in the horse world don't realize how much things that are happening here in the Cowboy Capital are being broadcast in national magazines, regional magazines, and on the worldwide web all over the place, so. And that's been going on for several years in building that barrel series. But one of the new events that is a new request this year that we're excited to hopefully become the home of is the Cowboy Capital Mounted Shooting. And for those who may not know, mounted shooting is the fastest-growing equestrian sport in the nation. And a lot of the, we really like this type of event because some of the team ropings or some of the marathon types of events where they're roping from dawn till midnight aren't coming into the community quite as much, but the mounted roping event, mounted shooting events are family events, and they like to have their event be from about nine to three, and then be through, and have time to go spend the night and eat out and have fun in the community. So we're hoping that they'll come this year for a four-day event, which will have people in hotels quite a bit, and make that an annual event here. A couple other ones, the Joe Beaver Junior Superstars Roping. For those that don't know, Joe Beaver is a many-time world's champion cowboy who now puts on clinics and ropings, and he start, he came last year, and that was one of the ones we used in our reserve requests last year, because we didn't know about it until after the budget. But that is a very family-friendly event where it's all juniors, it's all people 21 and under that come. He has one in Toledo on Easter weekend, and now has an annual one here in Stephenville on Labor Day weekend, and it's four to 500 youth, their families, their grandparents, their cousins, and it's the best of the best, and with his notoriety, it's very fun and very exciting that Stephenville can be home to an event like that. We have several other events on there, and if you have questions about a specific one, I'll be glad to answer it. We also have some money for reserve requests, which is for ones that come up through the year, and we've already had one that came today, and I actually have a meeting tomorrow with the Region Three High School Rodeo Board of Directors, a couple of them, that are wanting to have their Region Three rodeos and finals here in Stephenville. And they're having those same meetings with Hamilton and Circle T Arena, and Graham and Young County, and it just depends on which community can provide the most support or the best atmosphere for their series, and that would be four to five weekends throughout the year and a big finals with four to five days. So lots of exciting things there, and I know that we have several other events that are longstanding community events that bring in sporting athletes as well as some conferences and, but we don't have a convention center, and so Lone Star Arena is our asset. To us, that's our convention center because that's the facility that we have right now that can bring in people to stay. But along with the events that we support financially, there's a lot of other events and conferences that are held at Tarleton, that are held in churches, that we provide welcome bags to, and provide them restaurant and hotel lists, and help them to let their guests have a good time here. So as you can see, the chamber is hard at work utilizing the funds that you entrust us with to bring more people and ultimately more dollars to Stephenville, and hopefully those people will continue to have word of mouth to spread to their friends so that more will enjoy what we have here. So the proposed budget that you have in front of you is based on the projected occupancy tax that was built into the city's budget, provided to us by Mark and Walter, and we believe that the figures and information presented show that we've been a good steward of what you've entrusted to us, and that we have plans to invest it to have a good return for the community as a whole, for our local businesses, to be able to see a positive impact from more visitors coming to the community. The chamber greatly appreciates the opportunity to partner with you and appreciates the time that you take to look at seriously all the ways you have a lot of tough decisions to make in allocating tax dollars in the best interests of our taxpayers, so we appreciate the sacrifice that you make as being servants and volunteers, and we look forward to partnering with you, and I'll be glad to answer any of the questions that you might have.
Okay. Thank you, July. Any questions from the council?
July, refresh my memory, the rodeo event that we used to have here that we lost to San Angelo because they had more hotel rooms. What was the name of that?
That was the National Rain Cow Horse World Finals. It was a week-long event.
Right. We sure like to have that back. Are we making any progress on the hotel room count?
Well, we've got about 600 hotel rooms right now, and unfortunately, for an event like that, we don't currently have the facilities arena-wise or hotel-wise to give them what a city like San Angelo is able to provide with, with the grounds and the hotels. So what we are trying is for the ones that maybe aren't quite that big, that need more hotel rooms than what Stephenville has, because even when they were here, some of them had to stay in Granbury or in Glen Rose. We're trying to go after some of the more medium-sized events that everybody can stay right here in Stephenville, until the point where more people invest or where there's a bigger need.
Thank you very much for your hard work, and that of the Board of Directors and the staff on growing tourism in Stephenville. We appreciate it as a city council very much. You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions? Ms. Taylor?
Oh, thank you. Thank you, July. You guys have done an excellent job, and I was curious about the 1,400 visitors. Did you have, or can you give me an idea about how many of those were potential businesses? Were there any coming in wanting to open a business or shop here in Stephenville?
Yes, there's certainly some of those. We've been blessed this last year to have a record 60 ribbon cuttings and have over 80 businesses that joined the chamber, and so we definitely see businesses. A lot of times, a phone call's the first thing we get from a business, and so in a lot of times, our staff tries to go out and meet them, and so we don't have quite as much walk-in traffic from somebody wanting to start a business as much as usually a phone call of where do I start, a lot. But yes, we're thrilled that, from what we see, there are still entrepreneurs and people taking risks to open up businesses in this uncertain times.
Sure. Thank you.
Next. July, I would like to echo the sentiment for us that y'all do an outstanding job, and we appreciate what you bring to the city, you and all the other folks that work with you, and you do a good job, and we appreciate that. I have a couple of questions about your proposed budget. I noticed that last year you ended with excess of $90,000 in your carryover from previous year after the occupancy tax, and then your expenses this year, that's going to be significantly less. Do you anticipate any other issues that might create problems by lowering that amount, or is that, is this where you feel comfortable and move forward from there at the beginning of next year?
Okay, that's a good question, and our goal is to keep around 50,000 in the balance to have a reserve in case there's something happens, but, and last year, our budget was not to have that much, but the revenues exceeded the budget. Again, Mark, as us are very conservative in what we expect, even though with what they've budgeted this year, I feel like it's going to be 20,000 to 50,000 more than that. And so I feel that if, that we will have more than that left over at the end of the year, that we've budgeted income conservatively.
I appreciate that, and I think Mark does budget a little bit on the conservative side sometimes, but that usually ends up better at the end of the year.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Dr. Cross?
Yes. One of the conventions that was held in Stephenville last year was that of the Fort Worth Episcopal Diocese, of which I am a lay official, and in my meetings with other officials at the diocese in the weeks following the convention, I heard nothing but praise, and a great deal of praise, not only for Tarleton, for its role in producing the convention, but also a great deal of praise for the city of Stephenville and the Stephenville Chamber of Commerce for its role as well. So congratulations, good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and that's a good example. You know, with that event, David Kincaid contacted us probably a year and a half ahead of time, almost two years maybe of advance, and said, "We're going to have an event, it's coming to Stephenville, how can you help us? Let's put it on the calendar. What, you know, what can you do? What can we provide to the guests ahead of time? What kind of welcome packets can we give?" And so it was fun to get to see, that's the first time that large of an event for their church had been here, and lots of delegates that had a good time, and will hopefully come back to visit.
Okay, thank you. Any other?
Mayor, I'd be glad we accept your reported proposed budget for the 2013 year.
Okay. Okay, we've got a motion by Mr. Nick, seconded by Mr. McDowell, to approve the budget and annual report. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? opposed? Okay, that motion carries unanimously to approve, and let me, I know Mr. Nick's wanting to move on with the agenda here, but I'm going to say a couple of things. First of all, there's an echo in the chamber, and that is an echo of thanks to you, July, for your leadership. You've done a phenomenal job, and we have full confidence you'll continue to do that. Want to thank the board and your presence here tonight to show support, not only for July and her effort, but for you as a group and your commitment to our community, and we thank you sincerely for that. It is so important to what we do as a community that goes above and beyond what each of you do individually, and so together, it's really, really important and special, so thank you for that. You kind of glossed over, and I want to come back to some things, a couple of things that you said, not that you were making light of them, but to the significance of the fact that there was a 13 percent increase from 11 to 12 in revenue is noteworthy. We all need to pay attention to what trends are and what is the trend in the economy so we can ent- significance of the fact that there was a 13% increase from 11 to 12 in revenue is noteworthy. We all need to pay attention to what trends are and what is the trend in the economy so we can anticipate where we're going and conservatively prepare for those opportunities as they present themselves. And so, you know, your report is very encouraging, especially with where we've been from '07 to '08, '09. My interest was also piqued by the question about rooms. And I think, you know, Alan, that was a great question about, and Russ, you were asking about rooms, and our occupancy rate and when we as a community feel like there is a new tipping point for another hotel to be built, and what will cause that to happen. We collectively need to understand what that is in the sense of economic development and how we as a community can have a sense of that. Are we a long way off? Are we almost there? And if we'll just push a little bit more through a concerted communication effort, we'll be able to get that extra hotel, which will get that extra event, and it just goes from there. So, you know, where are we in that discussion? And I think us understanding that collectively will be very important. Another trend that you mentioned that's very significant, I think, for us to keep track of somehow, and I don't know, you know, Mark, you can help us with this maybe, but ribbon cuttings per year. You know, what was it in '11? What was it in '10? What do we want it to be in '13? And what's good? That's really important for us to have a sense of how we as a community are supporting the businesses that are here and whether the decisions we're making are making things better or worse. And so, I think that's good. The final thing that I will mention is how the money is being spent for events is very reflective of what makes Stephenville unique. And that is, that's critically important, to support what makes us good. And the first of those is the support to events at Tarleton. And the Tarleton Invitational, for example, with FFA judging competition, that brings over 2,000 high schoolers here who may make decisions about coming to Tarleton someday.
Eight thousand.
Based on that, eight thousand. Yeah, thank you. Based on that event. So, support the Tarleton. And the other thing here is the Cowboy Capital of the World, and, you know, the reflection of investment there in that area. And when people think about Stephenville, those are the two big things. You know, once they, you know, mention that we won a state three football championship, and they liked the sausage part eight. But the bread and butter, the main pillars are those two, and the investment reflects that. And I think it's a good reminder, as we look at this budget, for us to remember, you know, where our uniqueness is as a community and where we need to leverage our strengths in the future. So, just thanks for the report and excited about the coming year.
Thank you. I appreciate your support and look forward to working with y'all for years to come.
Okay. Thank you.
And I promised my board that they wouldn't have to stay for the whole entire meeting. So if you wouldn't mind letting some of them who have other meetings to get to, being excused, I'd appreciate it.
No, no, let's vote on that.
I knew we'd let them go. Let them each leave a dollar with Mark on the way out.
Yeah, yeah. There we go. Thanks for coming. Okay, and Councilman Pendleton, thanks for joining us.
Was I late?
Yeah.
Did I miss anything?
Tell him you were in court.
Yeah, we understand. You were in court. That's right. Speaking of court, next item is the Police Department report on racial profiling. So, Chief Bridges.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The legislature requires that law enforcement agencies in the state of Texas present an annual report on racial profiling data to their respective governing bodies prior to March 1st of each year. And so, that's what this report is. As you'll see in the information in front of you, there was 2,623 motor vehicle-related contacts in calendar year 2012. The majority of those contacts were made on Caucasian drivers. Moving over to the search category, you'll see that 311 searches, again, the overwhelming majority on Caucasian drivers. Consent searches, that means where the driver gave consent for the officer to search the vehicle. 103 of those. PC searches, that was a search where consent was not given but was based on probable cause. And then, as you'll see, 176 arrests resulting out of these traffic stops, and 139 of those, the overwhelming majority were of Caucasian drivers. In 2009, the legislature also required that law enforcement agencies begin to record whether or not officers knew the race or ethnicity of a driver prior to making a stop. Of these 2,623 contacts in 2012, in only 108 of those stops did the officer know the race or ethnicity of the individual he was stopping prior to the stop. And then, the last thing that I would add is that in 2012, we had no complaints from citizens alleging racial profiling by the Stephenville Police Department. I will answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Chief, is this, are the statistics here consistent with the population mix in our community?
The numbers for Caucasian was, the contacts were about 80%. The household with vehicle access was at 86%. For the African-American community, the contacts, 3% access to vehicles, households with access to vehicles, 3%. The Hispanic community, 16% of the contacts, and they had about 10% of the households with vehicle access. Now, what I would tell you is that the standard that we use, and it's the standard that our consultant recommends as well, is called the Fair Road Standard. And that is based on census data of the number of households in Stephenville having access to a vehicle. That particular standard is a standard expressed by civil rights groups as the preferred standard for reporting racial profiling statistics. And so, that's the standard we choose to use. There might be other standards out there that might, in theory, present a different picture. But in order to be transparent and demonstrate our goodwill towards the community, this is the standard that we use.
Okay. Other questions?
Mayor, I don't have any questions. But pending further questions, I would move we accept the Chief Bridges' annual racial profiling report as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. McDaniel, seconded by Ms. Taylor, to accept the annual racial profiling report. Any discussion? Okay, are you and all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries to accept the report as filed. So, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is to consider approval of Resolution 2013-02 endorsing legislative action in the current legislative session to enhance the competitive electrical market and system reliability to protect the traditional role of cities in regulatory process. So, Mark, if you'd give us an overview of that, please.
Thank you. Throughout the legislative process, we are participants in many coalitions as well as numerous organizations that we all play a part in, respective of our special interests within the organization. This one in particular was brought forth by our Electric Coalition, Electricity Providers Coalition that we are a part of, that helps us to continue to maintain and establish the current rates, utility rates for our residents. And with deregulation, there's been, and we've seen a continual shift from local regulatory and local authority over establishing those rates and establishing those parameters. And it's slowly being taken away and being decided at the state level. So, the purpose here, and I'll sum it up really in the one resolution, on page 10 and 11 specifically, is just a resolution in support of the coalition's efforts. But for me specifically, this is the most important part of that, and that is to encourage, to preserve the traditional role of cities in the regulatory process, including management of the public rights of way, original jurisdiction, and reimbursement of reasonable rate case expenses. So, what we're doing is saying, please continue to protect our local authority and let us make those decisions. And we're more better equipped, not more better, more better. We are better and more capable of making those decisions and representing our local residents in this local jurisdiction than at the state level. And that's what we're asking them to do. So, with that, again, I'll be glad to answer any other questions. I know there's a staff briefing report here.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Koo?
I have one question. Is according to the information you gave us, Encore is owned 80% of it by EFH, and they're talking about it going belly up in this report, page eight. Do we have any clue about what that would do?
We do not, but our coalition is following it closely. And what you're referring to is, again, a part of why it's so important that we stay involved. And that's a very good reason there, rather than them continuing to circumvent the local authorities and going straight to the state for remedies on respective situations. But I do not right now, they are watching it very closely.
They have no idea what the real meaning is.
Right now, we don't know that. I can tell you, as of yesterday, when I read the latest update, we don't know what the outcome's going to be at this point.
Is there any legislation associated with this resolution so far?
I believe there actually has been a couple of bills already filed. But I know, when we received this, this was early part of January. It was actually before bills started, were actually being accepted. So, they're just saying, hey, everybody get on board and get ready for the fight, is what they were asking of us. And that's what this does.
So, we don't, we don't know what--
I can get you those pieces of legislation. I can forward those to you as we go forward.
I mean, they're starting to hear bills this week.
Right, right, right.
Any other? Okay, I entertain a motion.
I would make the motion to approve Resolution 2013-02.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Evans, seconded by Mr. Nix, to approve the Resolution 2013-02. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously to approve Resolution 2013-02 endorsing legislative action in the upcoming, in the current regular session of the 83rd Texas Legislature to enhance the competitive electrical market and system reliability to protect the traditional role of cities in the regulatory process. All right, the next item on the agenda is to consider appointing Evelyn Velchov to fill the vacancy of Library Advisory Board. Okay. Second? Okay, moved by Dr. Cross, seconded by Mr. McDaniel, to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries unanimously to appoint Ms. Evelyn Velchov.
It's Velchov. It's Velchov.
Velchov. Okay, thank you. Velchov. Sorry about that. And let me thank her for volunteering. All right, next on the agenda, we've got Chief Bridges back by popular demand to talk about us considering approval of the application for two police department grants.
Okay, the first grant is for upgrade and replacement of our emergency communication system. I believe in the last two budget cycles, we've indicated the need to replace this equipment, and funding has not been there. This equipment's reached end of life. Spare parts are few and far between. We've got one vendor that will come and work on it. But once these parts are gone, there won't be any others. So, this particular grant is a one-year grant, requires no matching funds from the city. And each request could be up to $80,000. The, this particular grant would pay, like I said, would pay for the dispatch, new dispatch stations, and would actually add a third dispatch station in the event that the city expands dispatch operations. The total amount of grant funds that we've requested on this particular project is $49,390, which would cover the consoles and all the associated equipment, an additional complete dispatch workstation, and that is also includes the cost of two digital mobile radio units that would bring the police department into P-25 compliance. The second grant has to do with electronic file conversion. This is another item that we have brought before council during budget, during budget talks, and the funding has not been available for that. We have got a large amount of old records in storage that have not been electronically scanned. The amount of time that it would take for one employee would probably go into years if that one employee did nothing but scan all these documents that are stored. The scanning, this particular project that we have asked funding for is $65,650. $55,650 of that to contract with a vendor to come in and pick up all the documents and electronically scan them. And then, additional $10,000 for heavy-duty shelving and storage units for permanent file storage. Again, this is also a one-year grant, does not require any match on the city's part. Both of these items in the grant proposal this year, these two items rank high with the preferred requests. In other words, each year, there's certain items that will necessarily gain preference over others. And we believe that both of these fall into applicable categories that make them a little more favorable than what they may have been in years past.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Chief, after the first year, are there additional costs that we're going to need to budget for to maintain or operate this equipment if we're fortunate enough to get the free money and the grants?
It would most likely be just like it is now, just operating costs. If something were to break down, if we needed a part or something like that, then yeah. But that sort of maintenance, we already cover that in our existing operating budgets.
And they'd have some type of warranty for a period of time, too?
I would expect so, yes.
Mayor, pending other questions?
Yeah, we got one down here.
I have a couple, or one question, two questions, really. Do you feel pretty confident that we've got a good chance at these grants?
Excuse me?
You feel pretty confident that we have a good chance at these grants?
I would not, I would not want to express any confidence like that.
You don't think it's a surefire thing?
I would, I don't think anything's a surefire thing. And in fact, funding is, for the grants coming out of Washington, has been cut considerably. And that was one of the things, there was five or six different things when COG sent the proposals out of kind of what would be the preferred selections. And like I said, we feel like these two meet two of the very top preferences and then accomplish needs that we have and have had had for some time. So, we want to be optimistic about it. But there's a number of agencies competing for grants. Last year, we made it into the cut for funding, but we were so far down on the list that the money was gone. So, hopefully, these were-- that the money was gone, so hopefully these were well-written this year and will gain favor with the decision-makers.
I think you answered my other question. These are federal funds that are.
Well, they filter down to the state.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
This is a JAG grant, Justice Assistance Grant.
Okay. Doesn't come from the Texas Legislature, in other words.
No.
Okay, thank you.
When you scan these files, do you get to get rid of the hard copies?
Yes.
So, the process, the service we're gonna purchase then is scan and destroy?
Would be, let me go through here and look at it.
I like scan and dispose of.
I think there's actually a technical legal issue here. I think it's called destroy.
Yeah, varication of file conversion and subsequent paper-file destruction would occur through close monitoring and contact with the vendor. As written in this grant, by the end of the grant period, which would be August thirty-first of two thousand and fourteen, we would have no paper files located off-site.
I think it's a great, I think the scanning process is a great thing. I attended a convention last spring, and there were probably a hundred vendors there that do this project for cities, hospitals, accounting firms, et cetera, and the way of the future is digital. You know, I mean, just square footage in a storage rack is the most expensive piece of property we can own. I'm glad you're doing this. I hope you get it. If not, I'll do what I can to get the money next year in budget.
We hope so, too.
Okay, Mr. Nix?
Chief, are these two separate issues, or are they tied together in the grant process?
No, they are, they are two separate grants.
Okay. So, we might get one or?
We might, we might get one, we might get both, we might not get either one.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? I want to come back and clarify your, who, who makes the decision about whether the grant is awarded? Is it the COG, a committee at the COG, or?
It will initially go to COG, yes, and then I would, would imagine that, I guess the ultimate decision comes through, the funds are administered through the governor's office, so I would imagine.
Well, if you wouldn't mind, I'd just like to know, you don't have to answer tonight, but what committee at the COG is gonna make the decision?
Okay.
And just give that information so we can help them make the right decision.
Well, I, I do know that these, that both of these applications were, were pre-submitted to the folks over there at COG, and maybe contrary to years past, these, these actually had some favorable comments, were favorably looked upon, so maybe they were written a little better this year.
Well, that's good. Well, thank you. All right, any other discussion or comments, questions? All right, I entertain a motion then.
Mayor, I move we give the chief the authority to apply for the two grant funds, forty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars for communication system upgrade, sixty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars for electronic file conversion.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. McDaniel, seconded by Mr. Nix, to approve the application for police department grants for communication system upgrade and file, electronic file conversion. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries, approved to apply.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief, for your effort with that.
Good luck.
All right, we'll move on to the next agenda item, and that's the Environmental Committee Report. And, Koo?
We met on January the fifteenth, and our committee consists of Dr. Cross, Russ, and Alan Nix, and we were all present. We talked about recycling, a couple of things about recycling. We have no recommendations for the city council at this time, but we did talk about a few things, and one was recycling, and I believe, Mark, you have some comments. We found out that there's much more recycling in this town that's available to the citizens than at least I thought were, so would you care to share some of that information with us?
Yes, sir. The, the question was, what are some of the avenues that are available to the residents currently either under contract or available just throughout the community? And so with that, we've got, we had some flyers, we've got some flyers around City Hall that we do distribute, and staff has also, I believe, distributed that via email to you. So, let me just kind of go through some of those options and available services. The first is, is we do, under contract with our current provider, which is now called Progressive Waste, it was formerly IESI, they have, we have a drop-off location whereby they accept newspapers, plastic, and tin can, tin and aluminum cans. That drop-off location is, is actually open twenty-four hours a day, but it is, it's manned, the office is right there, and they're open, the office is open from, from seven to five every day, except for Saturday, and I think they're only open half a day on Saturdays. But they do accept products, and you're able to go by and dispose. Everyone knows and has probably seen the big pile of iron and metal that is out on your way to Dublin, out on the Dublin Highway, but E-Rath Iron and Metal at, out on three, Highway three seventy-seven accepts aluminum cans, soup and vegetable cans, metal and iron. And then we also have, Tarleton State University does have a recycling center. Most of that is for their own, for their own use, but citizens are allowed to go by and drop off at that location, and their environmental services and their recycle center, available for drop-off, is, is out on the College Farm Road, and just as you go past the horse facilities there on the right, it's actually on the left, left-hand side of the road, right as you go down the College Farm Road, out on the farm. Out there, at that location, they accept copy paper, newspaper, magazines, file folders. They also accept plastic, clear, wattle, clear plastic, bubble wrap, shrink wrap, basically, and then any of your, the trash bags. They also accept aluminum cans and tin cans, scrap metal and copper. You actually get a little bit more money for it if you'll take the copper out to E-Rath Iron and Metal, but, but they do accept copper there. And then, and then miscellaneous items that I actually was not aware of, but they do, they say here that they accept automotive batteries and electric motors, hot water heaters, and all appliances. And you can take appliances out to, as well, out to E-Rath Iron and Metal. In both cases, whatever you have, if you have a refrigerator or something that would have some kind of fluid in it, freon in particular, you are gonna have to dispose of that, and you're required to get it tagged, so it's gonna have to be by somebody that's licensed to be able to dispose of those products. I also want to kind of just tell you that out at our, at the city landfill, the city landfill does accept, brush goes into a different pile, we actually sort and separate tires, and we separate the, we're gonna begin separating the roofing shingles, but also any of the metals that we do kind of sort, separate before we put in there. I say that because each resident is given one free pass, so I remind you that they basically have an opportunity to go dispose of some of these items on one occasion, but it's not what I necessarily call a routine recycling drop-off location. One of the other recycling events that the city does sponsor and host, which we have twice a year, we have electronic recycling, and this year, our first of two thousand and thirteen will be held April twenty-seventh, I believe that's around Earth Day, I think we try to kind of host it about the same general vicinity, but Saturday, April the twenty-seventh, out at what we refer to as our Municipal Service Center on, at twelve oh one Glen Rose Road. From nine AM to noon, we accept every computer, computer monitors, printers, fax machines, keyboards, photocopiers, VCRs, DVRs, stereos, cell phones, TVs, and I'll put a little caveat on, if it's the old big, big TVs, they're gonna, they will have, we will have to charge you ten dollars, or some special disposal issues that have to be because of the bulb, but they do take many of these items. We do not take microwaves and/or household appliances for some of the other locations to, to go to, and then we also have this same event that will be held in the fall. So, there's many opportunities, and as I mentioned, between the, these are recyclable opportunities. We also do have available, and just to kind of remind everyone, as we're talking about disposable issues, if you're not able to recycle, we do have a, one free landfill pass that will be sent out. Again, we send those out in Bay sometime, and then the other thing I just want to remind everyone is that we do have a bulky item pickup, that if it's something, as long as it's not hazardous of any kind, every Monday, if you'll set it out at your curb, and occasionally, again, they, they try to drive the entire town, and they're doing it real fast with the, with the rear-end loader, but if, if for some reason, and you know you're gonna be putting something out there, if you'll be sure and call the office, I know that they'll pick it up, but again, they're supposed to pick it up, and they pick it up every Monday, and again, I can, I can tell you that if, if they don't make the pass by, if you'll let them know, they make a pretty conscious effort. So, that's something that's pretty unique, I believe, to our contract. Not everybody is afforded that, and especially at eleven, eleven dollars and eleven cents for twice-a-week pickup, we're getting a big bang for all the bucks in all the different ways. So, with that, hopefully I've answered all the questions that we.
Yes, thank you, thank you. One of the other things you didn't mention is disposal of medicines in that's.
We, I'm sorry, we do have two other items. We do have household medications, we do have a drop box, I'll just, well, you're kind of, there's two or three things. Household medications, we have a drop box at the police department in the office, it's available twenty-four hours a day, and you're welcome to just take all of your old medications. Please don't, you know, we encourage you not, definitely do not put them down the toilet. Please do not do that. If you do, if, you know, preferably not dispose them in the trash, because you never know how that might end up, and so this, this way it allows us to make sure that they are disposed of, and they're not somehow in the wrong hands. But also, I want to, you know, there's many containers around town at Walmart and HEB specifically that I know of, that actually accept old eyeglasses. I think all the optometrist's office do, they, we recycle eyeglasses in town, there's many stations for that. But then we also have household hazardous waste, that's not a recycling event, but it is an environmentally friendly way to dispose of old paint cans and old chemicals that are in your garage, and I want to make sure that if, if you're not aware of that, while we're talking about all these issues, we traditionally schedule the city of Fort Worth, we have a contract with them where they bring their, their equipment out here and help us dispose of that, and we do that traditionally in August, first part of September, and we have not set that date yet, but as soon as it is, so, you know, if you'll, please don't dispose of it and hold on to it until August, and we'll make sure, let's make sure we dispose of that properly.
Thank you, Mark. We also discussed the concept, we were talking about beautification of Stevenville, and there's been some concern about the garbage cans being put on, down in, in the city and picked up on the city square, and we just talked about the possibility of not having polycarts, and that's a work in progress. We also talked about the landfill, and it's good for many, many years, perhaps forty to eighty years. We talked about the possibility of perhaps making an all-weather dump road for shingles and brush, because when it rains out there, the system shuts down and is, really makes on some of the contractors a real problem, when the weather's wet, they can't dispose of their bad shingles. And again, this is a work in progress. There's also some Tarleton students that are interested in perhaps other groups on helping the city look prettier and talk about adopt a block, like the highway department has adopted a mile, and that some of these organizations might be interested in helping us pick up trash in public places, and so that was discussed. Again, no action was taken on any of those items. Mr. Mayor, that concludes our report.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Spine?
Mark, if I remember correctly, and you may have said it, and I flipped out here for a second, when they destroy computers, they do get, they'll give a certificate to the company that the hard drive was done securely? I think that's what they said last time, last year.
We do, for all of our recycling events, and for this particular one, they will give you a destruction order if you so choose.
So, that'd be good for some businesses.
Again, because any business can bring to this, it's not just to residential disposal.
I mean, it's real important for the city.
And so, yes, if you desire a destruction order, now, we do not, you know, I'll just say, if you were to take some of your business papers down to the drop-off location, you would not get a destruction order.
No, but for, particularly.
But for electronics, we, they will give you a destruction order.
Any other questions, comments? I didn't see cardboard anywhere. Where do you take cardboard?
Tarleton will accept cardboard, not any other place.
It is my understanding that Tarleton, the Tarleton location does.
Is it on here? I just didn't see it. Okay.
I've taken a lot of cardboard at Tarleton.
Okay, all right.
But it does not have it on their respective flyer to us.
You know, you, you listen to this discussion, and you can ask yourself, what is, Steven will have a recycling program? And there's, there's two ways to answer that question. One is to say, no, there's not a program in the, in the traditional sense of the word. The other way is to say, yes, there is a program, and it's executed in many ways. And I think what, what tonight's discussion really makes evident is that communication of what's out there is critically important for people to participate in recycling, and those that will choose to, there is an avenue for them to do that. And so, this is, this is encouraging. I think we just need to continue the effort, and I, I don't know what, what, how easy it is for somebody, for example, to come to our website and get this story about, hey, I want to recycle, push a button, and then it, it tells them, but we, you know, we might want to look at ourselves with a fresh set of eyes with that and say, are we making it easy for people to, to get access to a lot of?
Resources.
Resources that are already there. So, great, thank you for that. All right, the, the next item on the agenda is to consider approving the two thousand and thirteen strategic plan, and that's on page twenty-four of the, the agenda. And we, the city council had an off-site, we, we met for a full day to, to look at items that, that were of concern. When you look at the, the strategic plan that the city currently has, and you look at the comprehensive plan that we have, there are, there are, there's a library of items there that are of interest, and sorting through those to narrow it down to the focus of what is the council's contract for two thousand and thirteen? What are we gonna, trying to commit ourselves to try to, to execute in the coming year was really the, the purpose of that day, and the product that we've got here is, is a summary of those, those major items that, that were listed, and they're, they're broad enough right now in that they give some flexibility to the committees that they are assigned to, to more clearly define them as, as we move forward, but it also commits to some very specific items and assigns a, a specific committee to those items. And I, I guess I could just briefly, for, for those that are listening and, and in the audience, to, to know that what those items are, and then we can see if there's any discussion about those. One item is, is a focus on economic development and fostering existing relationships with industry, updating community profile, and evaluating incentives for, for that, that effort. And we looked at the finance committee to, to that item. Next dealt with the pay, wages and benefit for the, the city staff, and a review of the pay plan and staffing levels, and we looked at the personnel committee for that item. A third item, and these are in no particular order, this is just the items that we, we concluded were, were the main topics that we would focus on. A fleet replacement program, to look at the entire vehicle fleet for the city, not just in one area, fire, police, our, our general purpose, and come up with strategies to, to, to evaluate the, the use of those. The next item is, is to look at infrastructure, and that includes water, sewer, and streets, and develop a master plan to, to address the deteriorating infrastructure and a master plan for growth of infrastructure. So, two items here, one looking at existing, to understand where are we as far as condition, where, where do we need to? to understand where are we as far as condition, where do we need to invest dollars? And then, secondly, tied to potential future growth, what do we need to look at for infrastructure there? And the assignment to the public's works committee for that effort. And then another item that's related to what we were just talking about with recycling, and that is to look at how are we communicating with the public in an efficient and effective manner? And are we leveraging uses of websites and other media sources to provide as much transparency and information to the public as possible? And this, in this instance, we decided to stand up an ad hoc committee chaired by the people in the room that actually had electronic devices to take notes from. And they got tagged to do this because we figured, hey, if they're using them, maybe that that's a sign of who we ought to look for. So we've got Martha Taylor, Brad Pitt Pendleton and Dr. Cross that are going to be looking at that as we go forward. And then the next item, which is something that's come up during the course of the past year, there's a few items in our charter that are actually, we need to relook at based on legislative action at the state level. And one of those became evident to us when the seat to my left was vacated by Mr. Nash and the timing of an election and the decision process for our charter needs to reflect state law now. So Dr. Cross is going to lead that with the nomination committee to look at that. Next item was to look at growth and expansion and the look at an annexation master plan and what is the best long-range decision process to have in place to anticipate future growth and to plan accordingly, to complement the comprehensive plan, and look at a way to do this in a reporting process that accomplishes this in an annual basis instead of waiting for five or seven years until we reach a boiling point. But to really look at how is the best course to take from an annual perspective. And the planning and development committee was assigned with that effort. And then the final item that we kind of put on the table as a, not from the literal sense of that term, but to discuss is the development of a bond program and to investigate what that might mean as it relates to the topics that we had just presented, realizing that there's many vehicles to get us to the ends that we may be pursuing. And the review of a bond program and how it might be developed to support these items was considered. And so with that, I'll just see if the council has any comments or anything they would like to say relating to the overall summary. Anything? Okay. And I guess the other thing that we concluded was that this was, and I don't, I'm going to use the word contract and I'm going to use it loosely, but this document in here is intended to be an outline that each committee that's been assigned these areas to go forward and really refine and define what the task is so that these are achievable. But certainly the goal is for 2013 to be the calendar for action and for us to come, you know, to commit to come back at the end of this year to ask ourselves, how did we do? Did we execute what we thought we signed up to do? And that's why, you know, scoping these to what we think we can do in the coming months will be very important. And that's why this is really still in an outline form. There's obviously a need for some more definition as we move forward.
Mayor, a quick question.
Yeah?
And this may be a question for Randy. Have you read this document? I'm sure you have.
Yes.
You probably have. I just, a quick question about the role of the city council on page 24. Is there anything in the city charter that's inconsistent with what's been included in the role that's contained on page 24? It's kind of a general statement that you've written, but, and I didn't find anything. I looked it over too.
On the role of the city?
That's right. So the role in the city charter, the city council is the same or it's not any different than what's been written?
Well, generally speaking, I did peruse this document. But to answer that question, once you let me get back to you, because I don't think there's any problem with it, but I'd better look specifically at it again.
Okay.
Did you have a specific?
I didn't. Well, no, and I went, I did not see anything that was different. I just wanted to know if you thought there was any.
I have not, but I will look more closely.
Let me just speak to that because there is a line in there that troubles me just a little bit. And it's near the end where it says, throughout this process, the council must interpret public opinion and translate that opinion into decisions. And I think I'd feel more comfortable with this document, that line was just omitted. You know, there's been a lot of times I've had people come to me upset about something and you have an opportunity to visit with them a little bit and they have tendency to change their mind once you explain to them the reasoning behind the decisions that are made up here for the most part, most of the time. But, you know, I've got, I've kind of got a problem with trying to interpret public opinion and make decisions based on that. And quite frankly, I don't think that's what we do as a council.
I don't think that is in conflict necessarily with the charter or codes.
Maybe this is a statement I should have made to somebody besides our attorney, but I just don't like the line.
It's a matter of policy, I think, and up to y'all.
Yeah.
That's fine. We'll remove it. I typed it there. We'll remove it. Follow me.
That's a good comment.
That one sentence, is that the problem? Martha, is that what you were?
That's what I had a question on specifically. I just didn't know, because that was, I should have said it too.
Okay, any other comments or discussion?
Mayor, there were several other items that we discussed from this list on page 29 in our meeting that, and we roughly prioritized those as we went through the session. And I wish I had taken better notes on that to say exactly how many there were, maybe the top 10 or top nine or top something that received more hits, if you want to call it that, from members of the council. And we scored those after we had written these down on the sheet. I'd like to see that priority listing and see how many of those fall into these categories that we have here because I'm not sure they're all represented. Or maybe there's more here than what we prioritized in that list. I'm not sure. And as I said, I should have kept better notes as we went through that process because there was so much information that was moving back and forth during the process of that meeting.
And I don't want to put words in your mouth, Mark, but this list on the last page is everything that got mentioned that day. And I know that there are many items on here that are actually subsets of the larger topics that are in the previous pages. And I think what the committees need to do is as you're looking at these, to look back on this page 29 and ask yourself, okay, pay plan is on here. Well, that obviously falls into the larger category that's listed in here as an action item for the personnel committee. And that gets back to the refinement of the specific strategies that are mentioned to look to. We just didn't want to lose anything as we went forward. But I think there should be consensus that those items that are summarized from this larger list or those that we agreed to that day are, these are the big ticket items that we're going to try to move down the field. So if your question is, do we need to move these forward? Or I think the answer to your question is there, this, there may be a duplication on this last page and that's intentional because there was a desire not to lose any of the items that were discussed that day.
I think this is probably a complete list, but.
Let me see if I can kind of restate your case a little bit. The discussion that you just took us through about, you know, assigning things to committees, kind of tells us as a council, you know, what we're to be working on for the most part. I think what Alan is trying to say, and I don't want to put words in your mouth either, but I think what he's talking about this list is a list that's really specifically for our staff and to give them some direction about the things that they need to be working on as well. We can go back to the sheets that were hanging on the wall in our retreat and based on the number of votes that each one got in the roughly nine or 10 of them that had some discussion, you know, we can put these in priority or in order. It says they're not in any order now, but we could put them in order. And I think maybe what Alan's trying to say, that might be beneficial to staff, if we just put those first, I think there were nine discussions, we put those nine in order. And then certainly, as you have said, there are a number of things down here that could be included up. There are a lot of these things we talked about, same thing, just different ones.
Right, right.
And we could sure consolidate this list.
Yeah, but that's a good suggestion.
You know, I found it kind of funny that there were things that got mentioned, but when we went around the next time and everybody named their top five, there were things that didn't get a vote, not even from the people that mentioned them.
That's right, right. That means we're listening to each other. That's a good thing. And Alan, you just also mentioned something I think is very important for the council and the staff that's here tonight to, I think, for us to appreciate with what this is doing. It's intended to align effort so that there's one, not duplication of effort, but more importantly, so that the staff and the council are working on the same things. And that the staff isn't overworking on something and the council's working on something and maybe we're looking at some of those cross. No, these are coordinated, intentional, and if there's something staff's working on that the council's not concerned about, we need to know that so that we can pull that into the priority if it bumps one of these. But the staff participated in this discussion and we thought that was critical because, and they're working on this stuff every day, and we wanted to make sure that those priorities were incorporated into what we were talking about. And I think that, you know, the vehicle fleet inclusion in this is a perfect example of that where that was an item that staff brought to us and got incorporated into this as something for us to get in our, make what I'll call our big rock list, you know, the big items that we're wanting to make sure we define and work on in the coming year. So, all right, any other questions or discussion? Okay. I wanted to, I wanted to say one more thing about this, not to belabor the point, but for the citizens of Stevenville and for those that are in attendance, I mean, the council, I know, has spent a lot of time talking about this, but there are two big things that we need to think about in the context of this as we move forward. And that is, one, the state of our infrastructure in the city to make sure that it is taken care of while we recognize what's happening to our city. And what does that mean? If you look at our 2000 census, Stevenville population was 14,921. In 2010, it was 17,123. If we stay on that same pace, in 2020, we'll be at 20,000, 19,691. Tarleton just topped 10,000 students. They're growing 3% to 5% a year. That means in seven years, they're going to be potentially at 15,000 students. So we're seven years away from a 20,000-person city and a 15,000-person Tarleton. And what does that mean to the decisions that we face, you know, and how we need to think about these items as we go forward? And I really want to, you know, applaud the council for your efforts and the staff that day to really sit down and kind of frame these issues because they all relate into those topics in a way. And I think it'll be really important as we move forward to, you know, to look back a year from now and say, yeah, we did tackle these and we've moved the ball down the field. Okay? So with that, I'll, I guess entertain a motion to consider approval of this as laid out.
I would suggest that since Randy has, I guess, got a, is there still a question out there you need to answer?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I think you cleared it up and I hope that clears it up for Martha.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. It's been moved by Mr. Sveen, seconded by Dr. Cross to approve the 2013 strategic plan. Any discussion?
Oh, one question. I assume that we're moving and seconding subject to the removal of the particular sentence?
Yes, yes. Thank you for clarifying that. So it's been moved and seconded to adopt the strategic plan, deleting the last sentence of the role of the city council paragraph on page 24.
Mayor, one question. I think I understood you that this is a work in progress, right?
Yes, this is a roadmap.
Okay.
So it is designed for each committee to roll up their sleeves now and say, now, what are we going to do with this? It's to take a big idea and to frame it into what can we do this year, realizing that these items are critical for the future success of Stevenville and that we as a committee now have to define what we're going to do with this. And then we're committing to look back, you know, a few months from now and say, here's what we accomplished. And we signed up to do this and this is how we defined what we're going to do and we went and did it. So, any other questions or discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Okay, that motion carries to accept the 2013 strategic plan with the deletion of the last sentence of the role of the city paragraph on page 24. Okay, the next item's the consent agenda.
All right. Who we adopt to accept the consent agenda is?
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Sveen, seconded by Mr. Koo to accept the consent agenda. Any discussion? Okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Okay, that consent agenda is approved as presented.
Mayor, I would like to take note that Dr. Koo accepted two consent agreements consecutively.
That is, no big bucks spent on either one of them though.
That's worthy of, that's worthy of making the minutes. All right, the next item, comments from the city administrators. So, Mr. Kaiser.
Thank you. I just really would like to, if you have not had a chance to go by the rec hall or have not visited a rec hall, Little Dribblers or I'm not even sparred basketball game yet, the redoing the floor this year has been, it really has brightened up the room. And I'll just say, it's been a pleasant surprise, but staff has done a good job and a lot of work on the lobby area. And so I just encourage you to go by and take a look at it. That is complete. We're playing games on it. And again, I'm just, we're very proud of how it all turned out. So I just encourage you to go by and take a look at that. I do, specifically, there are a lot of projects with this time of year, we don't necessarily start or begin projects pending just kind of weather, but they will be. A lot of these projects that we've been discussing and have scheduled for this year, have already budgeted for this year, hopefully will be kicking off. But for those that don't know and haven't been down, we are rerouting traffic on Alexander Road and that will continue for probably six months, four months, six months. I think we're saying six months. So just understand that a lot of the improvements that are going on, but the street project will be coming in right behind that. So I couldn't even begin to tell you what the full cycle's going to be. But that's going to be disruption for quite some time and just make plans accordingly. The next thing I really, I wanted to update you on is we do have listed here the committee meetings. And it looks like it really may be better if we could scoot that if it's okay with everybody. I'm just going to kind of toss it out there. But it looks like we may bump that a week and actually have that, those committee meetings on February the 26 rather than on the 19. And again, but if I don't hear anything in major objection, that seems to kind of work out. And so we'll just, we'll bump those just to let y'all know. Other than that, again, I appreciate the staff. This is, the weather is crazy like it is. And in one day, it's freezing cold and they're working in ice. And unfortunately, we haven't had our slickers on very much yet. Hopefully we'll start getting to wear our slickers. But I do appreciate the staff and what they do, especially this time of year in the varying weather conditions. Unfortunately, it's been nice today, but again, it's crazy in their world. And obviously, it's, they wake up to a new environment. But I do appreciate all that they do and especially recognize it during this time of year. So, I'll be glad to answer any questions that anybody might have about any particular project. The fire station's going very well. The fire station's going very well. As we get closer to some walls, we may actually schedule maybe some better weather, maybe schedule a little site visit if everybody would like to go, maybe someday. We'll all just schedule an opportunity for everybody to kind of get an update on the project. But they are, we did have a meeting here a few weeks ago now. They are on schedule. It may not look like it, but they are on schedule. And especially with the holidays, it was kind of a little sporadic, but we're excited, and they should be completed by July 31st, is the target date. So.
Okay, any questions for Martha? Okay, thank you. All right, comments from the council? Mr. Koo? Dr. Cross?
No.
Mr. Sveen?
Jimmy, I did pass on to the neighbors that you are gonna allow the high school team to practice punting in that building.
Yes, we are.
Okay, that's good.
We don't punt.
We don't punt.
We don't punt, we go.
We may need to be pre-approved by the public health and safety committee, though.
Great.
I've got nothing.
Great.
Mayor, I'd like to acknowledge the presence of Mr. Sanford LaHugh here with Trickle Rollins, but they do a tremendous amount of work for us in a lot of different capacities for the city. I know he may live in Steenville, I'm not sure. He spends enough time here that he may have residence here. But I wanted to acknowledge his presence. He does a lot of good work for us, and I appreciate him and the fact that he's willing to come down and be on-site and have his feet on the ground down here and work with us and for us, taking care of the things that he does. Sanford, I appreciate it. I know you do a lot of other projects for a lot of other people, but I don't know how you have time, as much time as you spend here. But thank you for all the work you do for us.
Yeah, great, thanks. All right, Martha?
I'm good.
Couple of comments. Sanford, I know you're wondering why Nick's decided tonight that he was gonna make the big speech about you. He's got 7:05 in the pool, and he's trying to drag this out.
And what was your time? And what was your time?
It was a long time ago. I want to mention, one of the things that the planning and development committee has been talking about, as we've been through this planning process since last May, was training for the planning and zoning commission, and for council members, and particularly for members of that committee. But we had an opportunity to go to a planning symposium the 23rd of last month that was hosted by the North Central Texas section of the American Planning Association, and we had a couple of planning and zoning commission members that went with us, Janet Whiteley went, and then Tom Corles, who is their newest member. Betty went, and I went, so the four of us that went. But it was really a, I thought, a worthwhile trip, and I know that I enjoyed it. I just want to mention one of the, I thought it was kind of funny, but one of the workshops I went to, the last one. And you have to understand, I spend my days outside, and I really don't like being cooped up. So, by the time we got to 3:30 in the afternoon, I was about tired of sitting in the meetings, but I decided I was gonna go to this. It was called Expanding Opportunities for Community Engagement. Those of you that know me know how important community engagement is to me, but this, I found it interesting that one of the presenters was a lady from the city of Garland, and her title, she's a paid staff member, and her title is Neighborhood Vitality Manager. I thought that was an unusual title, and I think maybe we should consider putting that as one of our titles. I think Jimmy, you know, in addition to his duties as being fire chief, could be the neighborhood vitality.
I'll second that motion. Some would...
I'll try to get this fire station built, wait till after then.
Is that, okay? Well, in all seriousness, and I'm gonna help you out here, Scott, with the time.
You go along with Jimmy.
I want, I want, I want to thank you for your leadership and pulling this group together to go up there. It is, it's really important on a couple of levels. One, our partnership with planning and zoning and being on the same page as far as looking to these training events, staying on the top of the issues and working together is really important. And I know you took a leading role in getting people to participate, and so thank you for that. And Betty, I know you've been with various groups, but you taking the time to participate is also sends the right signal, that, hey, this is important to us, and we all need to come together. And so, you know, thanks to you also for doing that. I've got one final note, it's not on the agenda, so we may be in violation of the Opens Meetings Act, but I read today an issue that we may want to take vote on. The city of Charlottesville in Virginia passed a no-fly zone for drones. And given, you know, the fact that our UFO experiences around here, we may want to consider drones in the future, so I want to kind of keep that on...
Put that on the next agenda.
Put that on the next agenda? Okay, I thought we would...
Although I share your concern.
So, y'all need to look into that, if you hadn't heard about the...
Why don't we put Brady in charge of that?
Okay.
No drone zone?
No drone zone.
I'll have an answer back by tomorrow.
Okay, great.
We're not meeting for two weeks.
Thanks, okay. At this time, I'm gonna call us into the executive session in compliance with the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Law, subchapter D, Government Code, in accordance with sections 551, 072, deliberations about real property, and sections 551, 071, consultation with attorney. Okay. One moment.